The control room wants me to let everybody know they're starting to record and we'll start in like about a minute. Good morning, everybody. We'll call the special meeting of the Stearns County Board of Commissioners to order. Let the record reflect that all commissioners are present. Members, join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So, members, that we have one agenda item here today. I'm going to turn it over to our county administrator, Mike Williams. We've got the Justice Center study update on Phase One on the needs assessment. Turn it over to Dr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Most of this will be done by our consultants, but really, we're at a point that we do want to stop and make sure the board knows where we're at because this is a the needs assessment is done. So that is telling us the consultants have compiled a lot of data to make decisions that will impact really what we design in the end. So that's things like the size of the jail we need, the condition of our existing buildings and all of those. Those kinds of base data that really decisions in the future will be based on. So I'm just going to turn it over. I think probably Henry, are you going to kick things off? Or Kevin, are you going to kick anything off? I'm not really sure.
I sure can. I'll get a little bit of an introduction for our team.
Go ahead, Kevin.
So I'm Kevin Kornick, Facilities Manager for Stearns County. The Executive Committee that the county has put together to oversee this process consists of myself, Mike Williams, the County Administrator, Steve Hammers, the Assistant County Administrator, Randy Schreifels, the Auditor Treasurer for Stearns County, Sheriff Steve Seica, and the JOKO Captain Mark Maslin Kowski. Our outside group BKV is headed up by Henry Pittner. Joining him today is Bruce Schwartzman with BKV Group, Mike O'Drebel, working with BKV, Evan Larson, also working with BKV, and Pete Philippi. I don't have much more to add to what Mike said, so I think, Henry, if you're ready.
I think I'm going to kick it off, Kevin.
Sounds good.
Hopefully, you're going to talk a little bit about, well, I know you will, about your methodology so far because you've talked to a lot of people, including amassing data. So, thanks.
Definitely, Mike. Thank you. So, Henry, are you going to pull up the presentation or should I just start talking?
If I can have permission to share my screen, I'll okay, I've got it. Now, let me get to the right screen and we'll be in business here.
So first off, we want to thank everybody. This has been a really you know, it's a challenging process to do this because there's so much data and so much information and really, you all have been living this for so long that you see some of the challenges. I mean, St. Cloud, the Stearns County area is a great area. It's been growing, but you're in a tight area and the question is how to address that these long-term planning needs. And so really, we do want to thank everybody. It's been enjoyable. I think Kevin mentioned the group that we've been working with, with Mike Williams and Steve Hammers and Randy and Kevin, the sheriff and the captain Mark on all this. They've committed a tremendous amount of time in the last five months since we started the study. They provided a lot of data. They provided a lot of support and it's been excellent. The group that we've been really, you know, doing really what we would consider a deep dive and and understanding operational and operational issues that we'll talk about as well with the entire executive committee that we mentioned. Commissioner Clark has been involved in some of those meetings, which has been very valuable and we appreciate that as well. And all of these departments, the Sheriff's Administration, the Communications, the Detention, the Center Care, Central Minnesota, all of these various groups, the Courts, the County Attorney, all of these groups have been involved and communicated with and met with multiple times in evaluating some of their space needs, long-term needs, caseloads, inmate data, a lot of the information that Mike O'Drebel will get into. I'm just to back up for one second. Again, my name is Bruce Schwartzman. I'm a partner with BKV. I head up our government group. Henry Pittner is one of our partners as well. Henry has a tremendous background in courts and justice planning over the years and jails. And Henry has been leading this up and regular communication with Kevin. Mike O'Drebel is an architect as well, but his specialty has been data and data analysis. So he brings a tremendous wealth to that. Evan Larson with GLG, just around the corner, has been great and very, very helpful and supportive in doing the assessments. And then Pete Philippi with Contiguity Group has been helpful in doing the assessments of the facilities and the potential cost for some of the information that we'll go through. The agenda that we're going to touch on today is, as Mike had mentioned, the needs assessment we completed. So we have gone through and walked and reviewed the exterior of the building, reviewed existing documents, reviewed the interior of the building, gone through and really done a deep analysis of if you were to continue using these buildings, what kind of work would need to occur on these buildings from a code standpoint, as well as just a long-term maintenance standpoint. Goals and objectives, very important that we all are on the same page of what are the goals and objectives for this study? What are the goals and objectives for the long-term planning? And Henry will go through some of that. And then some of the criteria for the master planning options, whether, you know, keeping existing facilities. We'll talk about that or some of the other options as well. We know what was studied in 2011 and we'll kind of build on that and discuss on that as well. We'll get into the property assessment. The condition is, as far as the deficiencies, we've done a deep analysis on that as well as far as replacement costs, cost of systems. Mike will get into the data analysis, again, what have been the trends, inmate information, population information. And that then all leads really in the facility space programming. So we will we'll get into the space programming component as well and where that is. And I just want to tell all the commissioners, this is an open dialogue. It's a special board meeting and and we want to make sure that we answer all of your questions that you might have. So as we're going through this data and information, please don't hesitate to let us know if you have a question because we want to make sure that we're that everything is clear and that you understand all the information as we go through it as well. And with that, I think I'll let Henry get into the goals and objectives.
Okay, great. Thank you. Bruce, we'll move right along here. So there were quite a few goals and objectives. I'm sure you've had a chance to review them, but at the end of the day, it's all about incorporating best practices for service delivery and efficiency and in shared uses. So you'll see that as we go through programming, things like that. I think the other important piece is the solutions that we come up with ultimately should be flexible to accommodate the future growth and change. Those are kind of the two hallmarks of the goals and objectives from that. Everything kind of works through that, including prioritizing safety and security for all the stakeholders in the building and and then kind of the the end piece of all that is the operational facility costs really need to be considered as we start looking at all the components because that's that's some forever cost for you on staffing, on utilities, those kinds of things. So we need to be sure all of that is put together and put that all in context of doing absolutely nothing on the site, which is what the facility condition assessment is all about. So what we'll do is go right into the property assessment, a condition assessment piece, and this will be, it's a summary. But what we did is we reviewed the law enforcement center and the court facility and every component of both of those buildings in terms of all the architectural finishes and accessibility. We also did some functional reviews as we looked at that. All the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, voltage, exterior, all the components that you can imagine that make up the building are with that. What we then did is put together a list of deficiencies along with a cost estimate. Then we compared it to a facility condition index ratio, which is industry standard. And then our final recommendations on that. So that's kind of a process piece of it. So I'll start with the LEC. The thing you need to know of your facilities is your facilities team is doing a great job in maintaining the building. It's clean, it's maintenance and all of that is it's kind of deceiving all at the same time, too, in how the building actually operates. And the other interesting thing about the LEC is it's really interconnected. The, for example, the boiler isn't just for that building. It goes on and services the court facility and and the same with the chiller plant as that moves along. So there's a lot of, a lot of interesting things going on. What's important to know is that all of the, the building is of an age where all the systems are past their expected useful life. And we have some nice charts and things, not in the presentation, but that demonstrate that from plumbing systems to heating to outside walls and roofs and all of that. But everything except for the roof really is well beyond the timeframe. The capacity, you know, looking at the functions, the capacity of the building is obviously at this point obsolete. Also, not just the capacity and the number of beds, but also in types of separations that are available to the team, the size and the space for staff in the non-detention areas is everything's kind of compressed as time has gone and things have grown. You kind of grow into spaces and then you grow out of spaces. The bottom line is the structure is in good condition. That's the physical structure of the building, the everything inside of it really, as we look at it, it probably needs to be a full vet rehabilitation from that standpoint. As we were looking at the pricing of each of the components overall, there are some pieces that really have some significant cost impacts. Really, the full replacement of the mechanical plumbing, lighting, security systems, those all need to be replaced. They're all obsolete, hard to get parts and could be trouble at any time for you. The difficulty is it's really difficult to remodel in place, particularly in the law enforcement center and keeping the jail operational and all that. So as you look at how that might be done, there's at least a 20% to 30% premium to replacing those systems because of the movements and things that have to be done. So that's a significant thing to know. When we put it all together, we compared 24 different categories of construction against the replacement insurance value that is done regularly for the county. And we looked at that to prices of kind of a midpoint of construction of 2023, just to kind of get a little bit of escalation of pricing in to see where that might work if if we actually did a construction project. But we would, we'd be looking at about $39.5 million of renovation costs compared to your replacement cost value from the 46.5 million. So, you know, behind all of this is all the detailed information that you can see that Pete and his group put together based on the work that Evan and Bruce and the team put together during all of that. What it leads to is a facility condition index. And this is an ASTM standard, a national standard, that anybody doing a facility conditions report uses this ratio, which is renovation cost over the replacement cost. And you can see with the color here of the grading, the .85 for the LEC really puts us in a zone that would suggest that divesting in the property would be the right move. However, it's, you know, that's just looking at numbers and parts and pieces. There may be good reason to keep the building. That'll be part of the next phase of the project as we start looking at at the master planning concepts. So we will develop concepts that reuse the building and most likely put in addition to it, for example, and and then see where it lays from that standpoint. So this is really, it's a guideline. There's reasons to keep buildings past it, but there's good reason statistically to say, you know, this is just too much money to to spend on renovation. So that's, that's kind of the message for that piece. Similarly, we did the same for the Court's facility and looking at that. This building's a little little different than the others because it's being supported by the LEC for the mechanical system. You have air handlers and ductwork and stuff like that. That's part of the building. But again, even those pieces are still, you know, 28, 30 years old, so they're past due on their, their expected useful life. The interior would probably need some good refreshing in there and carpets and things like that. And again, the facility configuration is to that obsolete condition in terms of limited holding capabilities that you have, size and spaces again for the staff, courtroom sizes, things like that really would, again, make this building, much like the LEC, in our opinion, a gut rehab in reuse for the facility. Here again, we would have similar impacts of replacements of the mechanicals and plummings, security electronics, because you have all the holding areas that are in there. A lot of accessibility remodeling in the courtrooms. The, that would be for the jury and staff positions and witness and all of that. And obviously, as you're looking at doing renovation there, you don't have a lot of courtrooms available for extra use and for construction. So there'd be displacement of staff as you move along, just like we would have been the LEC. So with that, the the renovation costs to do all the work that the team outlined at 3.9 million with a replacement cost value of 7.17 million. And that equates to a .54. So notice severe as the LEC in numbers, but still just barely in the divest area. But similar to the LEC, we would look at strategies for renovation and addition to the building as one of the options in the master plan. So, you know, we can't definitively say it's, you know, tear it down and start over or or otherwise. So, but that'll all be determined as we move through. So that is the facility conditions assessment summary. Questions, concerns, thoughts regarding that piece of the work?
Members, questions for Henry or Bruce or others? I think people are taking it in right now.
Yeah, no, I understand. It's, it's, it's a lot of money and a lot to consider, absolutely. And and, you know, we've been working closely with the Executive Committee to make sure we've covered all the bases there. Shall we move on to the next topic then?
I was going to suggest, let's go ahead and move on.
Okay, outstanding. Well, let me introduce Mike O'Drebel. Mike is our data guy, programmer. He's been leading most of the needs assessment component and doing all the interviews and all the special meetings we've had, mental health, things like that. So Mike will give us a summary of the data analysis that he's done. Go ahead, Mike.
Welcome, Mike.
Oh, thank you.
Go ahead.
All right, very good. Well, I'm sure Henry already talked about the study objectives regarding the 30-year needs assessment and facility plan. An important aspect of our presentation and our work has been that we're looking to update the information and the projections from the 2011 study and some of the additional information. That was prepared by world architects and engineers with Kagan Meister Mac Architects, Contiguity Group, and Carter Global Associates. Before going all the way into the data, I wanted to recognize that our data sources are the Federal Bureau of Investigation, Uniform Crime Reports, U.S. Census Bureau, the State Demographic Center, the Legislative Reference Library, the Minnesota Department of Economic or Employment and Economic Development, Minnesota Department of Corrections, the Judicial Branch Court Services Division in particular, Minnesota Court, Seventh District, Stearns County Court Administration, the Sheriff's Office, and in particular, the Detention and Communication Division, and then the County Attorney, Community Corrections, Legal Help Center, and then, of course, Buildings and Facilities in Stearns County Administration. So recognition to all of those people who contributed quite a bit to our effort here. We also referenced some previous studies, including the 2017 study of the Sheriff's Office operations by the Center for Public Safety Management, CPSM, and you'll see that in some of our slides. Okay, Henry, next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, from the State Demographic Center, Stearns County is part of the EDR 7 Central Region. That's important because it's one of the two areas of the state that are still projected to grow in the next, over the next 20 years. Really, and that's an important aspect. Next slide, please, Henry. In recent projections, and this is from December of last year, the county is projected to grow by 17% by 2053 to a population of 185,455 from approximately 162,000 today. Also importantly, the elderly population is expected to grow from 26,000 to almost 35,000 residents, which is an increase of 36%. And the planning and design should recognize the importance of planning and designing for both the elderly and the juvenile and young family component over the next 20 years. Next slide, please. We looked as part of the data to update the information and verify information relative to crime rates. So looking at the FBI information on crime rates, the good news is, of course, that Stearns County, the parts of Stearns County that are primarily the patrol areas for the Sheriff's Office are comparable to the kinds of crime rates on the low moderate side comparable to Olmsted and Chisago Counties. However, the St. Cloud and some of the more urban areas of the counties have higher rates. Next slide, please. And this is going to become an important thing. And we look most specifically at Part One crime. There's Part Two and Part One crimes that are measured by the Uniform Crime Reports data. But when you're looking at Part One crimes in the county overall, there's a significant percentage increase and an overall percentage increase also in particular in the violent crime. And this is part of what leads to some of the things that are facing the system today. So another important aspect of the study here is that because of the presence of good data from a previous study, we're able to develop 25 or 45-year view of the date of crime data and also about a 40-year review of some of the other data, 20 years or more for court data. This is, these are significantly longer historic projection or historic periods. So the data as we look forward at least is based on a longer point. So violent crime is moving out. That's something or has been moving out. That's something to keep an eye on here. Next slide, please, Henry. When you're looking at the arrests that are affecting the jail and the court system, St. Cloud Police Department and the Sheriff's Office are responsible for most of the admissions to the jail. At first, when you look at that bar, it looks as though the St. Cloud police are overly represented, but you sort of aggregate all of the information and all of the admissions that are relative to different portions of the sheriff's operation. And you see that they're both pretty much co-equal in terms of admissions to the jail. Next slide, please, Henry. In terms of looking at where these people are coming from, we looked in detail 2017, 2019 data. And time permitting, we'll look at 2013 as well to just look at some of the trending information. But looking strictly at the 2017 data, 83% of the admissions came from Stearns County or one of the bordering counties. Of that total group of the 83%, the large majority came from the tri-county area, which included Benton and Sherburne. Overall, 38 or more of the Minnesota counties and a lot of other states were, had people who were admitted to the facility. Next slide, please, Henry. Looking at the admissions from homes by home city, 72% of the admissions in 2017 came from St. Cloud and 5% each from Saratoga and Wake Park. Next slide, please. Looking at the 27 admissions again, 2017 admissions, you can see that 42% were from out of county. This includes even the bordering counties. But that's significant because these people, when they come to the courts or when they come to the jail for court appearances or to attend or to meet with people who are in custody, we need to make sure that we're including parking and access to the jail, the courts for the family and for defendants when they're making their court appearances and after release. So this is a little bit about some of the admissions to the facility. Next slide. Looking a little bit more in more detail at the court cases.
Excuse me, Mike, can I, can I ask you one other, one question? I just was waiting for that, the next slide, just in case. You probably have this, you have such incredible data. Do you have the breakdowns for the city of St. Cloud by county?
Say again, the breakdowns by the city of St. Cloud?
City of St. Cloud by county, since I'm guessing the bulk of our Sherburne and Benton may be the eastern part of St. Cloud, since St. Cloud's in three counties.
Right. Oh, you mean the percentage of the St. Louis County that came from each of the county? You know, it's interesting. The data at the Sheriff's Office that we were using, the admissions data, gives their actual address. And then we looked at the zip code and we looked at the location. So we knew where they came from by zip code location. I did not try to aggregate the, I mean, we, and then separately, they report the city. So
Maybe at some point that that'd be something I'd be interested in. One of the hard things with the zip code is both the Benton, Sherburne, part of St. Cloud is the same zip code.
Yes, exactly. That's why
And Sherburne, the Sherburne part of St. Cloud is in a different judicial district because, so we just have to make things complicated around here. Thank you.
That's right. Now, that's interesting. The news, though, is that these are still the people that are hitting the system. So
Absolutely. That's why I'm just curious. It's helpful to our fellow county commissioners in the other two counties be able to articulate the portion that is from St. Cloud, but their counties. Thank you.
Right. Well, that's interesting. So the out-of-county man So the out-of-county may actually be, we'll have, I'll have to take a, I'll just take a look. I know these numbers.
Thank you. I don't want you to spend much time on it, but it would be helpful. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Okay, next, next thing. Looking at how this then carried through in the court cases, we looked in detail at all of the basic court case jurisdictions and classifications by the, working with the judicial branch of the courts in the state of Minnesota. And you can see from this that the major criminal cases from 2000 to 2019 are up 62%, whereas the minor criminal cases are down 31.4. If you look at the overall numbers, it looks as though the cases have dropped significantly because the minor criminal, as well as the minor, well, in particular, the minor criminal fell from 29,700 approximately to 20,000. That reduction of 9,000 cases looks like the court system is significantly lower total caseload. But the major criminal component went up by 60% and in some cases higher, particularly in that 2016, 17, and 18 timeframe. Now, the state actually adjusts for this. And this is an important issue as you look forward to planning for the county courts and for all of the things associated with the system. Next slide, please, Henry. The the court system in the state uses something called the weighted caseload system. And the weighted caseload system shows for major criminal cases as opposed to some of the minor criminal cases that I listed down below. Some cases, such as a murder case, or really looking at some of the cases about sex, running weapons, or felony DWI, takes significantly more time and resources of the courts and all of the associated agencies than the minor criminal cases. So if you were to pick two, for example, you could compare the murder case weight of 2441 with the traffic, which is considered minor criminal of two. So it's a roughly a 1,000 to one relationship in terms of its overall rating. So the reduction of 9,000 of the traffic cases or the minor criminal cases does not offset that gain of 62% in the criminal cases of a major, major consideration. And that's the next slide, please, Henry. That's reflected in how the court and the state look at how busy the court system is and in the assignment of judicial officers and support staff. And you can see that over that period from 2000 to 2019, the approved staffing went from seven to 9.7. And and then correspondingly, there were other staff positions. But the, it wasn't, and it, what was interesting is that the state courts are not adding support staff at the same level because of the impact of at the, because of the impact of automation and improved processing and improved workflow. But they are getting to the point where the court administrative actual needs are starting and have been growing over time. So instead of growing at 38%, they grew at 12.8%. On the other hand, the county attorney's staffing up more than doubled or doubled in that period, depending on what day you or which data point you took. And community corrections grew at about the same level as the weighted caseload grew. So this is important. It just shows that the impact of that type one violent crime, as well as population increases, continue to put pressure on the system going forward. Okay, next slide, please. Now, rather than talk about projections out of context, we wanted to go ahead and show you what the projections were looking forward. So using similar methodologies to those used in the 2011 study and also those used in the 2016, 2017 study for the for the Sheriff's Office Patrol Operations, using five different projection models, we looked forward and aggregated what we think the criminal civil probate family caseloads might be. So I think this one highlights, right, this highlights a criminal probate and juvenile as potential growth areas over the next 25 or more years in terms of overall caseloads. And because of that, there's going to be increasing pressure on the system overall, but also on the on the jail. So filings overall were expected to increase based on our projections. And ours were separate from but comparable to the study that was done in 2011. Now, in comparing that, the two studies, you can see that the overall filing growth was, in each case, was expected to go up. But the filing growth for criminal cases is reflective of sort of your recent history that shows an increase in criminal filing rates. It's worth noting that the civil, the rate of growth of civil filings has been slower, and that in part is due to the use of mediation alternative dispute resolution, which are often put into contract law. And because contract law takes precedent over toward that, that has helped to reduce the workload of court, although the court does maintain a consistent amount of civil matters. So this just shows that we've got a likely projection, and it's consistent with what was shown previously. Next slide, please. Which translates then to staffing position projections, which again are very comparable to, and actually a bit slower than the projections that were developed using similar methodologies in 2010, 2011. So for the past decade, the overall impact has been that there's still a projected need of growth from approximately 10 judicial positions to 14 positions in and around that 2045, 2050 timeframe. But if you look at the previous study, it projected the need to grow to 20 to 14 positions by 2035. So independently, our projections seem to show that we think that the projection, that the projected judicial caseload and judicial officer load will continue to grow in concert with the other indicators, the trends to this point, but perhaps not quite as fast as the other study had shown. Slightly different, but still projected to increase. Now, importantly, the county attorney, we, and this is one of the few things in the study where our work with the individual agencies and our work based on the projections is slightly different. Whereas community corrections did in fact project a need for about that number of staff in that timeframe based on their own independent projections. As an example, county attorney actually projected the need for more positions. And in talking with them in detail about that. And 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 in talking with them in detail about that. Am I going too slowly?
I think there was just the background, Mike.
Okay, I'm sorry. Well, as I was saying, the county attorney is the one spot where they're projecting a higher internally, they're projecting slightly more positions than we're showing in this chart. And we don't have a good reason to feel that they may not be accurate because in part, they said that they have current activities and current grant applications that will help supplement Stearns County funding to fund some of the positions and some of the activities of the county attorney's office. So it might be good in the 2040 to 2050 timeframe to be thinking of somewhere in the range of 90 to 100 and potentially up to 120 or more staff in that position. Now, when we get to the space planning, we'll talk about how the offices can be set up to take care of that growth incrementally. So I think it will not be an issue that should affect the master planning, but it's an area to pay attention to. But other than that, I think we're largely in concert with work that was done previously, although the projections were done independently. And it's all based on the most recent data, both from the courts and from the State Demographic Office. Next slide, please, Henry. We also looked at the workload and the study projections for law enforcement personnel. So previous study projections from the 2011 and then from the 2017 study showed that there was a projected calls for service, which is both an indicator of the workload of patrol and investigations groups as well as administrative teams, as well as the workload of the dispatch center itself. And while the study in 2011 did project that there was going to be a forecast need for over 100% increase, that was actually hit, those numbers were actually hit sooner than 2035. And adding to the complexity of that is the fact that a lot of the calls for service were cell phone calls, and the cell phone calls require a lot more work on the part of dispatchers. And they they require a more sophisticated response because it takes a little while to get permission in the call, in the call communication between the cell phone providers and the towers to both find the location and then respond specifically. So the the good news is that the dispatch center is doing a great job on that, or Communications Division is doing a great job on that. But it is workload, and that will eventually, I think, you'll see in just a second, that probably reflects in at least the potential, the potential for one or two additional call center positions. Next study, Henry, or next slide, please. There we go. So the growth rate was faster than the 2010 study projected because by 2016, the communications center answered 190,000 incoming telephone call. And that of that 34% were the 911s. What that led to, though, was the recommendations by the CPSM, our Center for Public Safety Management team for more training, more discretionary and supervisory level response positions, both in terms of investigations, but also in terms of the dispatch center. So whether you call them senior dispatchers or dispatch supervisors, these kinds of things were recognized in both of your previous studies in 2011 and again, in that 2016, 2017 timeframe, pointing to the need to have councils going but have good judgment and good supervision in communications to make sure that patrol was responding quickly. Overall, CPSM found that the Sheriff's Office was responding quickly given the large time or large distance response to the patrol center call for service. So good news in terms of the Sheriff's Office, always an opportunity to continue to move forward. But it always emphasizes this idea of training and high professional standards. And I think that also correlates to what the Sheriff's Office has been pointing to when we talked with them about their needs going forward, both in terms of personnel and in terms of spaces and support. Next slide, please, Henry. So looking then at the staffing from the law enforcement side, it's, we are showing that the 2020, 21 staffing base that from which we're looking at future projections very much reflects the recommendations of the 2016, 2017 CPSM study and that the staff realignments and staff studies have been very much in concert with the recommendations and toward professionalism and staff services and and also supervisory positions in the Communications and Investigations Division. So you're on track with what was done, and that then reflects forward. Next slide, please, Henry. And the projections of staff, which across the board, were almost identical to the projections of staff and rate of increase from the 2010, 2011 study in terms of rate of increase, with the possible exceptions of campus security, patrol, and dispatch. I think we've covered the dispatch thing in terms of the faster actual volume and call volume. The campus security sort of report of requested positions or needed positions, in fact, partly responds to your current deployment and alignment of spaces. So if you can put a singular potential benefit to the facility planning that you're doing, it would be concentrated first on that, on the campus security positions. Because to the degree that you can consolidate and reduce the number of entrances for the public and improve security and supervision and access control and perimeter control, so that the normal staff coming and going to create a secure set of facilities that support your system, the more you can do that with combination of facilities and technology, the less you have to rely on that on space, so, or on on staff. So that would represent not so much an issue that the projection of staff that was done in concert with the Sheriff's Office would be incorrect, but it's a benchmark that could be lowered or potentially could be adjusted if you look at improved facilities. In terms of the patrol, it's 10 additional positions, but this translates roughly to two additional round-the-clock positions. And that, I think, has something to do with just whether or not the calls for service continue to go up on that rate. So I think those three areas largely show that, other than a little adjustment here or there, were largely in place. There was an increase in the training staff, but part of that was recognition of the role of train, in training of some of the supervisory officers and then the assignment specifically to the Training Division. Next slide, please. So taking that then into the jail data, this becomes pretty important because looking at the 20, 2000 to 2019, over which period the county grew by more than 25,000 people, the actual number of admissions or the admission rate grew, but not at the same rate. So the lower curve shows that the admission rate per thousand decreased a little bit, but because the rate of admissions in the, or the number of people in the county increased, that the overall admissions has been steady and potentially slightly upward. And we're going to talk about that a little bit. Because while the admissions fell off a little bit in the 2019 and 20 timeframe, part of that was due in part to a referral release on MIPAT or other criteria. And the degree to which that will continue to be a factor in the post-COVID era is worth talking about. So next slide, please. So looking at the jail admissions and more data, or in more detail, you can see it's looking in from 2013 to 2017 on a monthly basis that there was, there is sort of a seasonal peak that correlates largely to the the, you know, decreases in the December timeframe, perhaps during school recesses. That was suggested, perhaps due to cold weather and people staying indoors. But there is sort of an annual decrease in the December timeframe. And there's also a heightened number of arrests in the late July, early through August and September timeframe, about the time when students are returning to the campus and also campuses, and also due to school activities. And then there's also a secondary spike later in the in the fall period or beginning of winter period, November, late October, November. So those things were based on your data. Hidden, potentially hidden in the data was an increase in the number and percentage of female admissions. Now, this was somewhat flat between 2017 and 2019, but there was a significant increase in the overall percentage between 2013 and 2017, which is what's shown on the chart. And there was also a significant, sorry, significant increase between year 2000 and 2017. So I didn't want to lose that particular point as we go forward. Next slide, please. So looking at the jail admissions, you can see that the Stearns County Jail admissions by gender, right, get the right slide, that the admissions by gender, there's still more admissions for males than females, but that that number is gradually increasing on the part of the female admissions to the jail. When you look at the admissions overall by by gender and day of week, you can see that the admissions to the jail are higher in the Monday through Friday period, peaking on Monday, in part because of transfers that are probably coming from other jails where somebody might be held and then transferred over to the Stearns County Jail. There is a concept that we labeled classification housing. I think the DOC might prefer the word orientation housing. But regardless of, regardless of the wording or the vocabulary, there is a population of the inmates that churn very quickly through the facility. And we've been tracking that because the number of admissions on a daily basis is a certain amount. But this reduces very quickly after 24 hours. So to look at that in more detail, let's go to the next slide. The average length of stay for all people in the Stearns County Jail shows that about 50%, 51% in 2017 got out within one day and 72% got out within three days. So when you're thinking about the jail and you're thinking about maintaining a good work environment where you're managing safety and risk and also still making sure that people are there when they should be for court appearance and based on other requirements for detention, you can see that there's quite a bit, that quite a bit of activity is centered in and around the booking area, perhaps in the first three days and up to 14 days. So moving forward from this, go ahead to the next one. Was there a question?
Yep, Madam Chair, I got a question. On the admissions increase on the females, is there any profile on that? On the admissions increase on the females, is there any profile on that? What's, what's uh, what, what, do we have a profile on that increase on the females? You know, what, what are those folks coming in? Is it violent crimes or maybe something not let so so much, drugs, alcohol? Do you have any idea?
And how much of misdemeanor?
Good, good questions. Um, I can have that, I'm not, I don't have it for today's presentation, but I can, I can begin, I can look at that. Uh, the data provided by the sheriff's office, we did look at all of the bookings, and we did look at them for uh, what the charge was. We were looking first and foremost at the severity of charge, you know, felony versus misdemeanor, and but um, but I do have more data that I could look at, so if if at all desired, I can go back and look at that. There, there are still a couple of points I'd like to make, though, about the totals and I, and in particular about the evolution from from misdemeanor to felony level charges. And then, but I think, I'm sorry.
Continue, thank you.
All right, all right, thank you. But that's a good point, and I think we can look, we we can look at that data and find out. So going past the average length of stay, that one, Henry, go to the next slide, please. The next slide begins to tell a story uh, in 2017, and then correspondingly, we were looking at the same story in 2019. And that's the, the people that are being arrested and charged with a misdemeanor are likely to be out of the facility in four days or less, overall. And the people that are arrested for felonies are in the facility on average for 15 days, then or 16, actually, almost 16. The average stay is four times more. And now this is really important when you look at the fact that because of the increase in severity of charges and the increase in the type 1 violent crimes, again, I'm not sure of the the makeup between gender, gender arrest issues, but the overall increase in severity is part of what's leading to the longer uh, to the pressure on the jail. And these are not people, if they're charged with certain level things, that they fall out of the classification release uh, net a little bit. It's it's harder to meet the MIPAT requirements and harder to hit, to meet release criteria uh, when you're in the felony uh, charge. So, you can see that um, when you look overall at felony versus misdemeanor, it's four times longer. Next, next slide, please. Let's see if I put the other one in. I did break that by male and female, and and I think on that first table, I showed you that the male males, maybe I had, maybe I didn't include that slide, but I do have a slide that I put together that shows that males are staying in the facility slightly longer, which is probably reflective of charge, but may also be reflective of previous institutional data and previous bad performance in the jail. Because classification criteria not only include consideration of the charge and consideration of your look of where you are in the case, but they also uh, consider previous arrests, previous behavior in the jail, and and in particular felony uh, activities and violence against the staff or others. So, it's a little bit hard, we'd have to break down some of that information to get more detail. We're not quite there on that. So felony versus misdemeanor, next slide, Henry, classification housing. Okay, call that orientation housing. But what that really shows is that when you factor in the number of people who are admitted to the facility, which you saw several pages before, and you you look at the number of people who are released, whether due to the fact that they're a misdemeanor or charged with a misdemeanor and they're, they've been able to bond out or release due to other reasons, or or perhaps also release uh, under felony charge, then the number of people that are there day two, day three, day four, um, you can see that there's a group of people that are churning, and um, that, when that has been, that was a historic idea uh, to look at this number, to try to understand how you can stabilize sort of the activities, the operations, and the programming in the facility, really concentrate your resources uh, for assessment and for early release and maintain maintenance of uh, activities associated with court release, attorney visitation, communication with family and others, well, for the people that are in there at a shorter period of time. And then the people that are there, because they're not likely to be released or less likely to be released at any given time, uh, you, you put them in housing that they're assessed based on standard risk classification uh, uh, data, and that allows them, then it allows the the sheriff's operation to be uh, safe and secure because they've got a better idea of who the people are. Um, I think Minnesota Department of Corrections is is pointing out that classification happens early in the process, but it, there still is this release mechanism, and so uh, recognizing this in an orientation housing would still give you an opportunity in the jail to keep people who are going to be, who are likely to be cycled in and out or are going through assessments, to stay in orientation housing, which I believe is supported by the sheriff's office. It's not a requirement, however, and probably the most important thing going forward is that regardless of how you look at these inmates after they leave the booking area, whether they go into just general population or or general classification housing of the 13 or 16 or 20 different classifications that you need to provide, or you provide some orientation or classification, classification housing, all of the housing needs to be flexible because on a given point, you're going to get peaks of of any of these crime, these uh, criteria or classifications. So, we looked at that, it helped us in some of the initial planning, and it certainly helps us in understanding the flexibility of the beds that are required. So, male or female, average peak and minimum, uh, need to keep all that stuff in mind. It is important dealing with those per, those people in the first three to potentially seven or a few more days. Uh, next slide, please, Henry. If you notice, I'm looking to the left, it's because that's where I see what's going on, but my screen is straight ahead, sorry about that. Now, what that translates to is looking a little bit at your historical average daily population on like stay. Um, the average daily population over the period have been about 160, it tailed off in 2019, but, and it hit peaks of 170, 169. And you say, well, that's more than we have actual beds, and that's because of, as you know, the funding that went to some of the placement. So, uh, you, your population, your adult, a average daily population for jail or detention housing um, exceeds your capacity, and that has continued to put pressure and emphasis on reducing your length of stay and trying to manage the population, both male and female and all, uh, other classification, special classifications, um, just to keep, keep control of this. But if you look at your total data, there have been peaks of approximately 200 in February and July in 2018. That's important because you still, while you want to offload and relieve those uh, peaks uh, and not build for the peak, you do need to recognize that even if your population is 160 to 180 on average with normal peaking, that you are peaking above that. So you will always want to have a relief valve, even if you don't build for all of them. Next, next slide, please. Which drives us then to the question of the Department of Corrections and how they review that. Um, the Department of Corrections gives you a rating of the number of beds that they call your design capacity. Uh, for Stearns, that's 151 beds. The operational capacity, which is defined as the number of uh, beds that you can use before they think or they say you're full, but you're full, um, and it reflects the idea that a certain percent of beds, percentage of beds is held empty for management factor is actually 135.9. This is based on your most recent um, jail inspection report, and these numbers are are published in that report. Um, which means that if you were to build for 160, with a 90% factor, you'd need 100 and roughly 180 beds. If you were to build for 180, which is a routine uh, peak that you've had over the past years, you'd need 200 beds today. And if you were to build for real peaks plus some level of projection, you'll, you'll need more beds than that. Um, compounding this a little bit is the fact that there has been increased focus on other needs for detention, uh, those people held in your detention facility. This includes uh, serious uh, mental illness um, and and behavioral health issues, high-risk, high observation and high supervision inmates, which require 10-minute and consistent and constant supervision. Uh, there's groups of inmates that are no longer held near facility or almost no longer held, including STS work release, and then there's special management administrative segregation and special programming, and then there is been some discussion of other future programs that are uh, enhancements. Now, Stearns County has a long history of using as many options and alternatives such as uh, comparable programs to the Yellow Line Project, and that's a very good thing, but you have significant needs and have had significant needs, and there's reason to believe you need to continue to adopt uh, and and use those in the future. So keep in mind that you need to have both capacities, and the idea is that if you do have an inmate that doesn't belong with other inmates, you may not have a choice other than to house that person in a, in an area that is not an individual cell, and it might be a cell block or a small pod area or sub, subunit that has four or more cells, and that causes empty cells to happen. So you have to have some additional capacity. Next slide, please. Okay, this slide, and I hope you can see it, in the background is sort of a greenish, tannish color. Uh, Henry, what color would you call that? Greenish, tannish?
Sorry, to me.
Olive, some sort of real light olive. It shows the total capacity, 151, and then the operational capacities in, uh, shown in the red uh, dash line. Um, this shows how over the past seven years, you've been above your capacities, both the operational capacity and your total capacity. So, while we looked before at the courts and we looked before at law enforcement having needs and continued growth, your jail is full too. And that points then the long and the short of that is looking at projections of need. Next, next slide, please. Your jail projections from 2011 showed that you'd have a need for 282 beds by 2035. And they projected, and this was in part due to the data that they had, which was based on a 10-year look, not a 20-year look, they, they projected the increases in your admissions to the jail, rising from the roughly 6,000 or 6,6,800 to 12,000 by 2035, which led to the bed space need that they were showing of 282 beds. Now, the 282 beds were all classifications, and they included some allowance for um, some allowance for inefficiencies. So the actual number of people they were saying was 246 beds by 2035, leading 282 beds. Now, the revised projections based on current data, next page, please, Henry. The revised projections are actually a little bit lower than the projections that were shown in in the 2011 study. Uh, first of all, on the admission side, we think that it's more likely that your admissions might increase to approximately 9,600 by 2045, again, looking at five or more projection models, and then kind of looking at what the basis of that might be. And we looked at admissions per population, we looked at length of stay, we looked at age at risk, we looked at the number of different factors. And in looking at the actual admissions, we think that that'll tend to be maybe not quite as high as 12,000. That's good, because, go ahead to the next slide, Henry, because that leads to by 2035, that would have led to a capacity need of an average daily population of somewhere between 220 and 240, which is a little lower than the 246 they had projected, and a capacity requirement in 2035 of 260 to 270. Um, if you bring that forward out to the planning horizon that we were asked to look at to 2045 and 2050, uh, that pointed to a population, probable population of 260 to 280 or 240 plus to 240 or to to 260. Now, the good news about this is that while, if you were to use a 15% operational capacity factor, it'd be 290 to 300. If you're, if you're able to use a 10% factor on top of, say, 250 or 260, you're going to be looking at 286 or 280 beds. Each one of these beds is obviously expensive, but that would be your total bed need, and your actual population might be 240 to 250, or perhaps a little bit lower. In talking with the State Department of Corrections as recently as last week, um, if the facility is designed by the team to provide many different classification separations logically, so that everybody has access to programs and services and can be put in appropriate housing, they would consider using the 10% factor again. They, they said they might consider a slightly higher factor, but we'd have to demonstrate that it was, we had sufficient capacity to meet normal peaking. I'm not sure we're going to be able to do that because the, the populations, particularly the smaller groups, tend to fly up and down a little bit more often. Um, so the peaking is more pronounced in the smaller groups. But even at 10%, we might not need a full 302 beds, which is shown in the 2045, but more realistically, somewhere in that 280 to 300 bed range. And I think we can continue to refine that as we start seeing how well the design provides for different capacities, because I think that factor will help a lot. So there's a reward to the county for efficient and effective design, and the DOC will recognize that if the design provides for suitable separation and flexibility. That is a big plus, and it's a big bonus due to the planning, and actually due to the data of the Stearns County Sheriff's Office, because without that, you couldn't be sure that those classifications would be, you'd have the data to support it. So, um, I, I think the DOC is likely to to reward um, planning that gives good flexibility in future facilities with um, giving you a slightly higher percentage that they'll allow for that difference in the classifications. And again, they have to be the ones to do it, I'm guessing, but I think based on what they've said to us, that that would be true. So, so again, we're right in that same range, we're a little bit slower than the 2011 um, study was showing, but it, but it, you're, you're moving into that 280 to 300 range, and even hopefully it will meet your needs through 2040, 2045, and maybe even 2050. Okay, Henry, I think that was it for the uh, look at the data. Um, I would love to predict exactly how many inmates you would have and exactly how many beds, but I'm, I'm simply not, I can't do that. I get you within a range, though, based on looking at the historical data, and that's what I think we've done. And again, recognition for all of this data to more than 15 different sources, we've tried to be very thorough in looking at what it's likely to be, and we've compared to all of the previous studies. That's it for me, Henry, thanks.
Any, any questions, uh, other than what we've already had?
Members, any questions? Knowing that, again, people probably need to go away and process a little bit because you've given us, I've gotten some of this before, it's still a lot to take in. Really appreciate it. Commissioner Luntar, do you have a, do you have a question or a comment? I, I'm not sure. And you're on mute.
Okay, does that work?
Yes.
Okay. Um, the uh, it, it's hard to project, but what will get the publicity uh, is the big number, and the big number is construction costs. The reality is, is that the really big number, yeah, and this at least was touched on in the data, is the increased cost of personnel. Uh, we can go back and review historical data, the current law enforcement center's 35 years old, and I'm sure back when that was built, that was uh, the, the big number was the focus, but the reality is the uh, uh, cost that's typically understated is the added personnel needs. And oftentimes, as the way and the direction of law enforcement is going, uh, the personnel needs, the individuals uh, that we need to staff this are ever more higher, more expensive people because of the specialized practice in this. And I don't think you have to look any farther uh, than uh, just down the road, and 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 I don't think you have to look any farther, uh, than, uh, just down the road in Minneapolis to appreciate where some of these simple things like insurance costs would go. When, uh, when there's a settlement by the city of Minneapolis for one case of 27 million, uh, stuff like that ripples through the system. So, uh, and I anticipate more of that going forward. So my, my thing is, is that we're going to have increased, uh, personnel costs that are going to be significant. The old rule of, well, we shouldn't be increasing costs by greater than the growth in population. That standard, uh, might be a place to start, but it no longer applies because the associated regulation and so forth has changed so much. But, uh, we'll have plenty of time to, uh, absorb all this and, uh, get more detail. But, uh, this was, uh, this was an okay starting point. Bottom line, if it was easy, ordinary people would do it.
Very true. Thank you, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. Anybody else for right now? Mike, I think, well, that is, I, I think we're, we don't need to accept this, this was just an update, so we don't have a specific action for today.
No, Madam Chair, there's no action. I don't know if, I don't know if the team has done here, but no, there's no action requested of, of the board.
And if members have, um, questions or, um, anything else, we can email them to you and then you pass them on, or what's the best way for us to do that or contact? But, because we obviously don't want all of us contacting each of you separately.
Yeah, well, I, just a couple of things, um, in, in, in quick response to Commissioner Lenzmeyer, um, as, as this team would tell you, they will get, when they get into designing or, you know, the conceptual design of a jail, that's when they will look very closely at, at staffing of that jail. And, and they're keenly aware that, um, how, how a facility is laid out has implications of how many people it takes to, to operate the facility. But I think, I think if there's particular questions, we can, I mean, you could point them to me and I'd just forward them to the right people. Or we could use Kevin, either one, but certainly you can just, if there's questions, they can, they can come directly to me and I'll forward them to the team.
And, um, members, no, in addition to what Lee was, was raising or asking, um, the consultant team has certainly been briefed on our county's efforts to be doing conversion and prevention. And there's, there's ongoing conversations about what that means as well as some of the, either, um, law changes or, uh, you know, obviously everybody's trying to make sure people are not sitting in a jail unless they need to be, but kind of along the notion of us having locked up the people we're afraid of, um, as opposed to others. So I, I know that you all are working on that, taking that into account when you're talking about this and Lee, certainly, Commissioner Lenzmeyer. I agree, it's important that we understand really what the staffing costs may be as well as, as we're moving forward.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Notch.
Um, so somewhere down the road in this process, when they talk about design or layout, uh, is part of that discussion possibly looking at maybe a new campus area versus downtown? And also the second part is, is there any thoughts or potential for like a tri-county jail arrangement?
Mike? You want to start it, you want to, I'm not sure who the best to be.
Thank you, Commissioner Notch and Madam Chair. Uh, yes, we've, the, the, the team here is going to look at, um, do some analysis of a fresh site. And actually, um, last week or whatever, whenever we last met, we looked at some potential sites that we thought would be a good comparisons, um, as opposed to being downtown. So that is somewhat of an analysis that, that this team will do. They'll use, they'll use a previous study, a bit on that as well, uh, because that did compare those costs. So, and anybody on the consultant team certainly can answer this probably better than I can. And now I can't remember what the second question was, Steve.
If there's a potential for a tri-county.
Oh, um, yeah, sorry, uh, we, the sheriff could probably respond best to this because, uh, the sheriff did talk to all of our neighboring counties about their current needs and, um, needs and interest in any kind of, any kind of collaboration on this issue. And I think the sheriff is here.
Yes, I saw, uh, Sheriff Soika?
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, I did reach out to, uh,
Camera on, please do.
I did reach out to all the other, uh, counties surrounding us and, uh,
Stop, excuse me for a second, Steve, do you mind turning your camera on just so we can see you?
Oh, sure. See me now?
Go ahead. There you are.
All right. Uh, I did reach out to all the surrounding counties and, uh, the only one that even comes close to the need for a, uh, new facility is Morrison County. Um, Benton County has a rather new facility out in Foley, Wright County's got a brand new facility, uh, that actually the study group was part of, uh, or the company was part of. Uh, and Todd County doesn't have the need necessarily for it. Uh, I of course didn't reach out to like Pope Counties and, um, and, uh, and, you know, Candy O.I. County, they have a big enough facility and, um, location wise, that's probably the issue, uh, as I think we all know that the, the county seat is, is St. Cloud and therefore you need to kind of stay in St. Cloud. So it logistically seems to create some problems as far as having, uh, combining with some surrounding, uh, areas as far as a jail goes. Uh, again, Morrison County was the only one that had some slight interest. I'm not even sure what that would look like if you'd have to build it, uh, up by holding for it or something. So, uh, I didn't really pursue it any further after that. And I, you know, as long as I got the mic off, one thing that I was going to add, add a little bit to, uh, um, answer to Lee's concern on staffing, uh, and of course, I can't tell the future like anybody can't, but the reality is the way these jails are designed, I'm not seeing that necessarily has to be a huge increase in staffing later on because the way they're designed nowadays, um, you're able to observe your inmates with the, with minimal staff basically. So it's not like it's a one-on-one type of situation, uh, just, just the way they're designed, uh, for sightlines and that type of thing and security purposes. I'm not saying that you're not going to have to add staff by 2045, absolutely. And if you had double the size of your jail, you probably will, but, uh, I don't think it's going to be a huge increase like we might be thinking. And that's just, I guess, my opinion, more from just going on the tour, tour of the jails that we did and just seeing how, uh, um, two or three correctional officers can monitor 60, 70 people.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that. It'll be good to be, as we're moving forward through this, obviously getting some of your specific thoughts on, on, on how that relates to, to staffing. And I'm sorry, I thought I heard somebody else.
Yeah, Madam Chair, hi, it's Bruce Schwartzman. I wanted to kind of reinforce what the sheriff talked about. In, in an efficient design and the way it would be laid out in more of a, 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 a smaller podular to provide flexibility for long-term for the facility, it would allow the county to add staff over time. So that, that staff discussion we're talking about clearly would be a long-term add, not an initial once the facility is done. And the sheriff's absolutely right. Uh, I think the Department of Corrections does work with most counties to look at the most efficient way, um, to provide that staffing and, and not overburden a county with too much staff. So that would definitely be something, as we move into the concept options, we'll be working closely with Minnesota DOC as well as, as well as the sheriff's office to look at the scenarios and which way to create staff efficiency.
Thank you. Any, anybody else? I know that it looks like another meeting at 10:30. Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, and I had, uh, talked to a couple individuals about this concept, uh, and it relates to, uh, what Commissioner Notch had also mentioned as far as facility. Um, you know, we probably will remain doing our processing, uh, downtown and, you know, having the connections to the court system is, is quite good. I mean, it makes sense and all that and we have the facility that we do. But is it a possible, maybe even, or even an idea to look at two campuses? And what I'm saying is that we have the more severe and processing downtown, uh, but then a, a, a location maybe to the west that might just house the, uh, folks that we need to be housing. Um, again, as you had mentioned, the ones that we're mad at, not the ones that we're afraid of, that do have sentencing and time to put in. And that could also be maybe a little bit more rehabilitative in that there could be some outdoor space too, where at least these people aren't staring at four walls and a ceiling all the time, um, and which might be somewhat good for them. So, uh, just the idea that is it possible to have two locations, one for the processing and more severe, and then one, uh, let's say in a different location that might be more rehabilitative or just a holding tank.
Thank you. That'll be another item for people to be looking at and coming back to us on. Um, and I'm looking right now at, at Bruce and Henry and Mike, um, and they've heard me say this, having served on, um, having helped lead several, uh, school bond referenda, you know, from a public standpoint, it's going to be really important, members, that we're able to help articulate how the facility is going to help also with creating change and what the outcomes are. And I think we've got a fabulous team who really is working on this. You know, the, the, the truth is, our school referendum levies, bond building, buildings, you have to go vote on it. We don't, it's just us. So we have to make sure that we're being really thoughtful and understand on behalf of our constituents, um, as we're moving forward. And we've got a great team to be helping with this.
Sir Clark?
Yes. Go ahead, go ahead, Jeff.
Jeff Mergen. Along with the, uh, more rural area, area campus, something to possibly keep in mind there is maybe some coordination with possibly, what comes to mind is a tech college, with getting some of these people, uh, ready for jobs, maybe truck driving, um, welding come to mind, I'm sure there are others, electrical. So that, that may be something for people to look at a little bit too. As that campus could maybe be a little bigger and supply some of those types of areas.
And, and having worked that campus, I can tell you there are a number of things that they can help with right now, with right now. And depending upon the severity of the crime committed, there are some things that might be out of range, but yes, it's been brought up about how are we communicating with the campuses, uh, to try to figure out what, what might be possibilities. And frankly, I've also brought up, members, we still have a lack of step-down facilities and other kinds of facilities that are important, uh, for people who've got certain needs that we're hoping, um, to keep away from a jail. So, so those may be things that we're looking at that are a little separate from, from this particular study. Anything else?
Madam Chair, one other quick question?
Yep.
Um, you alluded to funding, um, and I guess I'm going to throw this back to Mike and Steve. Um, are we going to be footing this entire bill on our own? Are, are there going to be, uh, availability for any federal and state assistance on this?
Dr. Williams?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Commissioner Persky, I, I, you know, we will, of course, look for those types of funds. I, I don't think that it's very likely that we would get, uh, larger amounts for this type of a construction.
Yes, Commissioner.
At least my knowledge, um, you know, with, with how other counties have, have done these, it's not typical that you get any outside grant funding, at least of any significance. Maybe, maybe the project team has a, has a different thought on that, but.
Madam Chair and, and Mike, we have seen, uh, some counties go for the sales tax option and I don't know how Stearns County would fall into that, but that has been an option that we've currently seen a number of counties look to pursue is that sales tax option.
Yeah, I mean, that's still, thank you, Bruce, but, um, you know, that's still local dollars, of course, but yes.
In, in an area that does have other local sales taxes already, so that is something that certainly could, but as, as Dr. Williams is saying, that is still local money. It'd be great if there was something else, but Commissioner Persky, the truth is that all communities have to look at these expenses, so there really aren't ways to leverage other people's resources.
And, and I would like to add, if I could, Madam Chair, one other thing is, we, we, in, in last year's bonding bill, we, we did see a number of counties across the state actually receive some state funding, uh, for jail projects, which was in, in my 20-some years of doing it in the state, that was actually kind of amazing. However, the, the, the board should be aware that when you accept state funds, there's some, there's some caveats that come along with that, that can potentially increase the cost of the project if you have to go along with certain energy requirements for state B3, prevailing wages. So while some counties have actually gotten it, they've actually stepped back and said, you know what, we're not, we're not sure, we want to incur the tax, the additional cost impacts on the project, which potentially would outweigh the money we're getting. So anyway, I think there, there's some opportunities there that we'd be glad to help the county with.
And Bruce, even if we were amenable to that, I don't know realistically how much more is going to be out there, given some of the other pressures for those dollars at this point, but we're pretty, we're pretty good at advocating, so you never know. Well, members, there is a Transportation Alliance Congressional Delegation meeting that's about to start and since we've got some congressional folks that are going to be waiting for at least a couple of us, I, I think, um, if you have any other questions or thoughts, send them on to Dr. Williams and hopefully we'll get a chance to, it's really good that we were able to set aside this kind of, it would have been almost impossible to do that during a regular meeting. So recognizing we may want to be doing this again and want to thank Sheriff Soika too for making sure he's reaching out to each of us, um, through this process as well. Okay, members, we are adjourned.
Have a good day, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.